Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Nancy?
Yes.
Mark?
Here.
Kurt?
Present.
Cindy? Bob?
Here.
Jay?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Okay, we have six of the seven Assembly members present, and I believe Member Logadakis is gonna be here today in the meeting. So, it's time for the voluntary Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, scoot down a little bit here. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from November 12th, 2016. So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Member Greger, seconded by Member Lynn, to approve the meeting minutes from November 21st, 2016. So, seeing no changes. Everybody in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those meeting minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is amendment and approval of today's meeting agenda. Is there any changes proposed by anybody for today's agenda? Okay, all those in favor of proceeding with what's presented to us, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearings, there are no public hearings listed today, no bid awards. Is there any visitors with views related to items on today's agenda? Yeah, you wanna come up and state your name, who you represent, Charles?
Yeah, Charles Davis, here for stuff we got on the agenda today. Here for, trying to think of it, Simon Elise for Thailand's down by the Middle Harbor.
Okay, all right, so we'll discuss it under unfinished business, but you're in support of it, I'm assuming then?
Yes, yes.
I thought so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Anybody else in the audience with views related to items on today's agenda? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to the next item. Just for the record, Member Logadakis is with us, so we have a full Assembly. Wait till she gets...
That's okay, go ahead.
Okay, you're good, okay. Next item on the agenda, visitors' views unrelated to items on today's agenda. Anybody in the audience that has anything they'd like to talk about that's not related to items on today's agenda? Seeing no hands going up, we'll move on. Board, commission, and committee reports, there are none. Consent agenda, two items there. First one is renewal of professional services contract with Ray Matoschowski and Associates for 2017 lobbying services, and the other one is approval of liquor license renewal for Harbor Bar and Harbor Liquor Store. We could vote on both at once. If anybody needs any more explanation, it's lobbying contract, I believe, is $42,000. So, is it the same as last year, Steve?
Yes, it is. It's the same as last year.
Same as last year is what we'd be approving. So, I would entertain a motion to approve both items on the consent agenda.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Member Strand, seconded by Member Logadakis to approve the two items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, those two items are approved. Report of other officers, first item there is the mayor's report. Pretty short. "We're seeking letters of interest. The borough is seeking letters of interest from Petersburg residents willing to serve on the following board's commissions until October 2017 municipal election. There's one position on the school board, two on the hospital board, one on the planning commission, and in addition, there's one vacant seat on the historic preservation commission. Serving as a representative of the planning commission, the appointee will serve until December 31st, 2016. Letters of interest may be addressed to the borough clerk and emailed to DThompson@PetersburgAK.gov or mailed to Box 329, Petersburg, Alaska, 99833, or dropped off at the Borough Administration Office at 15 North 12th Street." So, the next item on the mayor's report is we've asked for people interested to be on the SEPA Board. This year, there's only gonna be two people from Petersburg, one voting member and one alternate, and I propose what we would do is vote by ballot, and if it's okay with the Assembly, we could do it just by a simple majority, or if you wanna make it so it takes four votes for someone to get appointed, we can. And we'll vote for two, and then we'll appoint who's gonna be the voting member and the alternate. Is that acceptable to the Assembly? You got that, Kurt? Okay, so just write down...
I heard you, Mark. I heard that, yes. Debbie and I've already arranged that, Mr. Dootson.
Okay.
Oh, you don't have any either?
Oh, I do now.
Good, I'll be right back, hang on.
I've got some extras here. Unless it takes about 10 rounds, it's all good. Last time it took four, I believe.
Okay, you got me here, Kurt? Okay, go ahead and give me two of the three names, please.
Pass these to Debbie, and if you could tally it up.
Thank you. Um, no, I believe that will be decided as well. One voting, one alternate. You bet. Hang on one second. Do I have everybody?
Should we specify which is voting, which is the alternate?
I don't think, I don't think right now we're doing that. We're gonna do that after we do two names.
Then we can...
And then decide. Thank you. Okay.
Trying to simplify the process.
You need some help, Debbie?
Um, no, that's okay. I think I can do it, thank you.
Excuse me.
Okay. I'm gonna take, let me see. Okay, Kurt, I have you back on speaker for the moment. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's fine, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so the first round of votes, we have John Jensen with seven votes, Mark Jensen with five votes, and Cindy with two.
Okay, so that would mean John and Mark have been voted to be appointed to the SEPA Board, and I would like to, if there's no objections by the Assembly, to appoint John Jensen as the voting member and myself as the alternate to that board. Is there any objections? Okay, thank you. Next item on the mayor's report is remote salmon release site in Thomas Bay. The regional planning team met last week and recommended the Commissioner of Fish and Game approved Northern Southeast Regional Aquaculture Association's proposal to place salmon rearing net pins in Thomas Bay to provide a remote release site for chum salmon. In November of 2015, the Assembly sent a letter of support for the project to INSAR general manager Steve Reisenstuhl, I always mispronounce that, and I would like to send a letter of support for this project to the Commissioner of Fish and Game, Sam Cotton, as well, and Debbie has drafted up a letter. So, you know, we've already, you know, strongly supported this to the INSAR Board, and I'd like to reiterate that to Sam Cotton, the Commissioner of Fish and Game, if that's okay with the Assembly. Any discussion on it? And just another point, the regional planning team voted unanimously in their last meeting to support this and send it forward to the Commissioner of Fish and Game.
Mark? Where are we sitting with that right now? I saw that ADFNG had done some test saning earlier this year, and it seemed like the results were kinda inconclusive.
Um, to my knowledge, the test fishing they did was in July. I don't know how much saning they did in there, but they caught no salmon, no king salmon, and I can't remember...
Eighteen total.
Eighteen total fish, or something, yeah. And so, the proposal would be, the way I understand it, is they would release the fish in July, and, or no, they would come back in July, and the fishing would be nine days for 15 hours a day, and in the bay, by saners. It wouldn't be rotation for gillnetters at this point, but they might not even have a competitive fishery in there, they might just use it for cost recovery, to offset the downturn and the catch at Hidden Falls and other remote release sites, so. That's what I know about it.
Do you know if there's been any studies into the effects of the 40 million fry eating the crustacean larva, and any other effects of the ecosystem?
I can't answer that. I mean, I don't know. I guess I could answer that, yeah. So, I just know it's pretty well supported at the RBT desk. Does any, did anybody take the time to look over the letters? Pretty generic, it just says we support it, so. Any other discussion?
Hey, Mark, one of the thoughts that I just had was, you know, we have a tremendous amount of pollock right now out in Frederickstown, which is, seems to be maybe the demise of the brown king crab fisheries. Of course, it's just all assumption, and I think this, looks like this could be a win-win for us.
Yeah, I think all user groups would benefit from it, and if this passes the Commissioner of Fish and Game, the release of fish could start as early as spring of 2017, so in four years, for sure, maybe three, we would be harvesting chum salmon in Frederickstown. Trollers could intercept them on the way in, saners, if they have a competitive fishery in the bay, and whatever mills pass the District 8, Tech 10 line at Beacon Point to Woodpoint, so, back in the gillnet area. So, if there's no objection, we'll send a letter. Is that okay, everybody? Okay. We'll talk about this later in the meeting, I guess. We got a letter from DOT, we'll talk about other harbors' conveyance to the borough. So, that brings us to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The library submitted a Raspisson grant application for the construction of a covered shelter and story pole in front of the library. Roughly two-thirds of the funding for this project has already been secured and comes from private donations. If the application is successful, the project will be fully funded and able to move forward in the spring of 2017. The library also will be closed Wednesday, December 14th, for system maintenance. Temco has completed work on Bulkhead, and the contract is in the process of being closed out. Final payment for construction came in at approximately $40,000 under the contract bid, so total cost of the Harbor Enterprise Fund is approximately $188,000. Bulkhead is open for business, and as is the long-term 30-day parking along the north side of the drive-down approach. South side is again reserved for gear storage, not vehicles. Due to some vandalism in the harbor, restrooms and shower, we, the staff down there, started locking the facilities up after hours, so from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, the shower facilities have been locked. Ira and EMS is working with the volunteers to, on a recruiting campaign. One of the things we're trying to do is try out as an ambulance driver program, to see if this will get people interested in the EMS program. In particular, we're very concerned about EMS and having enough trained personnel to respond on ambulance calls. Sandy's working on the recertification of the ambulance service, which again, staffing plays a part in that, so it is something we're concerned about. Public Works staff is ready for snow, we thought we were gonna get a bunch, and didn't at this point, but we're ready for it. PIA will be assisting the crew by handling sidewalks, snow removal on the borough sidewalks, using some ATVs this winter. Shout out and thanks to PIA for this free assistance. We were successful in loading out all of the contaminated soil from the municipal building site. Total 36 cubic yards of diesel contaminated soil was loaded into two containers and shipped to the Roosevelt Regional Landfill. ADEC has given the borough a letter of cleanup completion with institutional controls. Basically, what that means is we are not required to excavate the parking lot to remove all possible traces of contamination, but the borough cannot perform any excavation in the parking lot, or build a structure on the parking lot without first consulting with ADEC. They would liable to, if we did that, make us tear the parking lot back up and do more excavation, so we're trying to avoid that. Community Christmas tree lighting was successful. Big thanks to Sarah and Randy Holmgren, who donated the tree this year, Teresa and Pete Litzheim for donating the space again, and Power and Light and Matt Biner, Biner, excuse me, for decorating the tree, and the Public Works crew for getting the tree cut, moved, and installed. Conduit runs and transformer bases are installed for the municipal building project. New wire was pulled in, and the report, we're starting painting, tile, tile work, they had to warm up the cement to keep it in good shape with the colder weather, but project's coming together really well. Looks like everything will be on tap for Phase 1 being done, the kind of middle of January. We did experience a circuit breaker failure on the 21 diesel generator during last week's, week ago now, test run. This unit is available, although my report says unavailable. Joe's crew has come up the way to keep it running until formal repairs are made. Not gonna be a cheap fix, there's a piece of equipment that's gone bad that may be 30, 40 grand to replace, so we'll be talking about that further. Thanks to the police department and many others who were assisting the high school and middle school with the video Chasing the Dragon, and panel discussion regarding opiate addiction, Erica Warhat, Susan Homer, Dr. Mark DeCillo, U.S. Attorney Jack Schmidt, Katie Einerson, and Michelle Wilsonoff all participated in the panel discussion. FBI Special Agent Matt Judy and Petersburg Investigator Callan Rossi also supported the effort. Again, thanks to all that were involved. We've had quite a few reports of thefts over the past few weekends. The biggest challenge for the police department is that many of these reports are coming in well after the fact, basically out of people's homes, warehouses, boats, and things, where we can't, they can't basically tell us when something was stolen. So, in many cases, it was several months before they last noticed or checked something. So, we are encouraging people to keep a closer eye on their stuff, unfortunately. More timely reporting actually helps us to keep stuff from leaving the island and becoming unrecoverable. So, again, unfortunate, but keep your eye on your stuff, and we'll continue the process of trying to find who's responsible. Aquatic Center and the mezzanine cardio areas are closed for annual maintenance, Sunday, December 11th through Sunday, December 18th. All of the non-aquatics facilities will be, and programs will still be up, occurring during this time. Santa Claus and his elves will be visiting us for breakfast with Santa on December, Saturday, December 17th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. We welcome everyone to join us in this festive event that includes picture opportunities, crafts, and continental breakfast. Open gym times have changed. For the month of December, open gym will be from 6:00 to 7:30 PM on Monday and Friday evenings, and starting in January, open gym will be on Friday evenings from 6:00 to 7:30, and Saturdays have expanded hours of open gym from 12:00 to 9:00 PM. Ira and Chandra met with Carl and Joe B., discussed some initial plans to complete installation of a small storage building out at Sandy Beach behind the bathrooms. This building was part of a grant received by the borough in 2012 to renovate the bathrooms. It is the final phase of the project and has a deadline to be completed by the end of this fiscal year. And thanks to the Petersburg Hockey Club and SIG Burrell, have completed outstanding work on the skating pond up behind the baseball fields. They've cleared the brush around and in the water, and constructed a gravel path up to the pond and around the front edge of it. Thanks to everyone who was involved in that. And that's it.
Okay, any questions of the manager?
Yep, just a question for Steve. Do we have fees in, the fee established for the use of the new Bulkhead down there?
I believe the Bulkhead goes, comes along with the drive-down permit, but I don't know that for sure. I'd have to get back to you. Mark, unless you happen to know...
I don't know, but Glow's here.
Oh, I'm sorry, great. I didn't, my apologies.
I have people sick, so sorry, I'm just here to answer questions like this. We don't have any fees for that. It's primarily, they're gonna have to use their own equipment, or, you know, one of the boom trucks will have to come down, and that's the cost of, primarily, so, no, it's kind of a free, it's like using the loading zone. There'll be time limits, things like that. You know, you can use it for a few hours type deal, so.
Thank you, Glow.
Any other questions of the manager? Eric?
Steve, I was wondering, a couple days ago, following that windstorm, tip of the tree had fallen over and sagged. I was wondering who had been able to fix that. All right, thank you.
That was Joe, and I think Carl, I'm not sure who raised their hand, just Joe, okay.
Okay, any other questions of the manager in this report?
Well, just one, one thing to note is that Steve had brought up the volunteers' recruiting campaign for an ambulance driver. Like, so far, as of last meeting, at least we have one participant who's joining up with that, so it affects, it seems that it is, it is working.
It helped, oh, good.
Great, excellent.
Oh, very good.
Three now, Sandy said, good. Good to get some more interest in that.
Yeah.
Okay, that brings us to item 14, unfinished business. There's ordinance for third and final reading today. First one is ordinance 2016-12. This is an ordinance amending the official zoning map for Service Area 1 of the Petersburg Borough. It's to rezone parcel 01-014-125. This is located at 919 Sandy Beach Road. It's gonna be rezoned from public use to single-family residential. I'd entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance, and it's third and final reading.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Member Strand, seconded by Member Lynn. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Cindy?
No.
Jay?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2016-12 passes 6 to 1, and it's third and final reading.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Member Strand, seconded by Member Lynn. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Cindy?
No.
Jay?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2016-12 passes 6 to 1, and it's third and final reading. Next ordinance on our agenda today is 2016-13. And this is an ordinance of the Petersburg Borough adjusting the fiscal year 2017 budget for known changes. I'd entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Member Strand, seconded by Member Logadakis to adopt ordinance 2016-13, and it's third and final reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that ordinance 2016-13 passes unanimously, and it's third and final reading. The next item on the agenda today was put here in case we wanted to take action on it, and we have a response. The letter came back today at, I don't know, 10:40 or something, 11:40 or something today from Mike Lucian from the DOT, State DOT. So, if we wanna take action on it, we'd need a motion to respond to the doc offer, I guess. You could at least discuss their letter, and then the public will know what's about. I guess I'd entertain a motion to approve the landing doc op. Well, they, actually, basically, they took it off the table, but we just need a motion so we can discuss it. Motion to discuss the letter of...
Okay, I'll make a motion to discuss the letter that we received of December 5th.
That's why I was trying to figure out that order.
We have a motion to discuss the letter, and a second, and the motion was made by Member Lynn, and it was seconded by Member Castro, and I can read the letter real quick, unless I have a coughing jag here, but. Dear Mr. Mayor, thank you for your letter dated November 9th, 2016. Unfortunately, we are unable to fulfill, to fully meet the terms and conditions associated with the Petersburg Borough's response to the Department's offer to transfer ownership and maintenance responsibilities at the Papke's Landing Float, the Kupernov Float, and the Entrance Island Float, further regard, you know, to talk about is the harbors, to the Petersburg Borough in exchange for $732,883 in Harbor Deferred Maintenance Funds. There are a number of reasons why we have reached this decision. First, the borough has asked for 1.2 million in Harbor Deferred Maintenance Funds. This amount is more than we, than what is presently available in the Harbor Maintenance Fund. Second, the construct of the second transfer between the borough and the city of Kupernov is unclear. We are uncertain about the timing, if and how much money the borough would transfer to the city, and if there are any other conditions with the agreement between the borough and the city. Third, while we understand why the borough doesn't want to take over ownership of the Entrance Island Float, the Department needs to make a deductive adjustment to the account for our cost to maintain or remove the harbor facility. If you have any questions, please let me know, and that's Mike Lucian, DOT. So, I mean, I've had conversations with Mr. Lucian, and he told me last Friday that he'd be sending this letter, and I talked to him briefly this morning, and he said what could potentially happen in the future. I mean, now that the offer they gave us is, you know, they can't respond to what we ask for. So, what he said might happen, like after the first of the year, for instance, could be an offer from the state to Kupernov to take over that facility, and maybe take Entrance Island out, and then maybe an offer to the Borough of Petersburg to take over Papke's. And, of course, I would assume there's gonna be reduced offers in the financial side of it from the state, but I guess that's where we're at. Cindy?
Do we have any kind of an estimate to know what they're talking about as far as a deduction for removing Entrance Island? I doubt that they would repair that facility, but do we have any idea what dollar amount they're talking about?
$200,000 was the number that was thrown out there.
So, that would leave us with 532.
532, yes. I thought our letter was quite clear about what we wanted to do with Kupernov, that we would transfer directly to them. I don't see any ambiguity there whatsoever in my mind, what we wanted, what our intent was.
I didn't.
Go ahead.
Well, my personal feeling on that one is, once it's transferred to us, it's none of the state's business what happens with it after that. So, that, I'm not too terribly concerned with that, that question from the state, the Entrance Island, and the condition of both the floats are of bigger concern to me, and whether Kupernov would really have enough funding to maintain that facility in, in the future.
I think Mr. Lucian was kinda surprised when we asked for 1.2 million dollars, and I said, well, that's just what the Assembly feels we need, if we're gonna take these facilities over and be responsible for them. And in that conversation, he said, well, there's money in the fund, or in their, in their coffers, or whatever you wanna call it, but they just have, to give us more money, they'd have to take it from someone else. And I, well, just send a letter, I guess. So, that, this is where we're at.
I guess I'd like to see us think about this one, and then put it on the agenda for next, the next go-around, either deciding whether to respond or leave it alone, you know, what we wanna do, if that would be all right, and then put the letter up on the web with it, and then also, I'd like to put it out at Papke's and a few other places.
Post this, Heather.
Yeah, so that people have a chance to look at it, and just see if we get, what reaction we get.
All right. Debbie, did we post the letter, our response letter to the state on our website?
I believe we did, yes.
Okay, I wonder if they should be, if that would add any clarity to it, if we posted, but we actually sent them, and then here's the response, so...
Yeah, and I'd asked Debbie, and she said she had done that.
Okay, all right. Any other thoughts on this? I mean, I don't, I guess, you don't like our idea.
I like the idea of posting these notices, though, just to kinda aid in our effort of transparency, to show the public that we truly are doing due diligence in order to, you know, try to hold on to these docs, but do so in a manageable way by the borough.
Well, one other bit of fairly good information on this topic, I think, anyway, is Sitka, the Borough of Sitka, when they took ownership of the Baronoff Island Harbor, it took five, six years. So, and there was, before the borough actually got close enough to where they'd accept it. So, I don't know if it's a done deal or not, but 1.2 might be a little high for all three for all three of them. I thought we did good by asking for it, just to comfort ourselves. Any other discussion on this letter? Nancy, did you raise your hand or?
No.
Okay. So I guess that's how we'll proceed. Next item on the agenda under unfinished business is 16-348. This is approval of Good Investments lease application for assignment of Washington Alaska Properties LLC's Tidelands lease located on the water side of 16 Singley Alley. It's Alaska Department of Fish and Game dock and it's parcel 01-007-474. I'd entertain a motion to approve this lease assignment.
So move. Second.
Okay, motion made by member Strand, seconded by member Lynn to approve this lease assignment, reassignment or whatever you want to call it. So any other discussion? Cindy?
I would like to amend the assignment of lease if possible because I'm really uncomfortable with item 5A, which is, basically says the facility is in good condition and has been maintained. And as we discussed before, that isn't necessarily the case. I think the lease should include a time period by which the deficiencies should be rectified and specify that the funds that are in the escrow account for that purpose be used for that within that timeframe.
So that is a motion to?
To amend.
5A?
To amend 5A, to add a time period for bringing the facility up to appropriate condition.
Any idea of a date for that? I know that it's being worked on right now. It looks to me like the, the pier part has been redecked and, and maybe we could have Charles speak to that. He's the applicant to get the lease transferred to.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. You must not have gotten the letter. Some of those questions were presented to me and I did put out a letter, let you know that there is $100,000 set aside for this project and that is in, in holding.
And I, I did say that, but this document says the lease is in good standing and the conversation that we had at the last meeting is that there did need to be work on the facility. And so I just want to put in a timeframe and I'm comfortable with a year. I, I, I understand your intent and that's the purpose of the escrow, but the lease is saying it's already at that condition and it is not.
Well, that, that was the lease that you had with Washington Alaska Properties beforehand. And, and I know that was a concern that'd be brought up to speed. And not only is it your concern, but it's also the concern of the state who's, who's the, the renter there. And so it's our, it's our, that whole project's already in place. And in that letter I gave you, it stated that the, that the dock facility project would be done by, by March 1. No, I take that back, April 1, basically just pending on weather. And as far as the dredging goes, as soon as we get closed on this building, we will be pursuing the, the core permit needed to do the dredging. And we've already got a dredge lined up for the project. So hopefully the dredging will be done in the next year, but the dock by beginning of April will be up and working and back in the condition you expected it to be.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Charles?
Since you're there, I just wanted to thank you for submitting the development plan that you did, as it outlines or addresses the concerns we had during the last meeting. Thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for giving us that, Charles. So we have a motion on the?
Did we get a second?
We didn't get a second.
No, we didn't. So we have a motion to, or we have a motion to make an amendment to this at a time certain for the dredging and for the dock completion. So we need a second if we're going to move forward with the amendment.
In this way, just to provide a timeframe?
Right, it sounds like the person applying for the lease is?
Agreed to that.
She doesn't have a corporate for dredging, but is working on it. Who knows how long it takes.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion to amend section 5A of this lease agreement and a second by member Castro. So discussion on that for as far as a date. Hold on, Charles. Did you, what do you have? Do you have something to add, Charles?
No, just really on the dredging, probably say fall of 2018. I mean, just because of how the core permit stuff falls into place and they're already looking at doing core permits and some dredging, possibly sometime, a lot of that approval is going to be going on then. I, I have no problem with the timeframe on, on the dock and getting the facility up. As far as the dredging goes, we definitely want some more time. We'd rather it be done sooner than later ourselves, but due to working with the core and the permitting stuff that they got going on here in the harbor and it might be something that they make me wait until after your guys' harbor dredge study has already been done. So I just want you to keep that in mind when you're trying to set a date for the dredging.
So December of 2018 would be a reasonable end date?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Thank you, Charles. So should we?
Mend.
Jay?
Yeah, I don't know who this is a question for. Maybe Steve or whoever else can answer it, or Cindy, I guess. What benefit do you see from us amending the lease instead of his going off of his development plan at this point?
Two things. One is that the lease is incorrect because it says it's in good condition when it is not. And the other one is that we did not follow through before. I want to put something in this lease that shows our intention, that we really do intend to have that facility kept up to standard.
Okay. Any other discussion? Bob, so we have a date. We're going to work with the applicant's date of April 1st by the time the dock's done and then put in the date of December of 2018 for the dredging. I imagine that would, could be flexible if you can't get permits for some reason. He's working with Rick Braun, I believe, for getting the permits gone through. So he's doing due diligence, I think. So any other discussion on the amendment to 5A? Clerk call the roll. You've got the dates, Debbie?
I do. And I was going to make it December 31st of 2018 if that makes sense.
That's fine.
Okay. On the amendment, Eric?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jay?
No.
Cindy?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment to put time specific on this is under 5A of the lease agreement passed six to one. And now we're back to the voting on the main motion to assign this lease over to Good Investments. Any other discussion on the main motion? Clerk call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Okay, the lease is amended, passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is new business. First item there is resolution 2016-30, a resolution authorizing the sale of Borough-owned land within the Petersburg Borough. I'd entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Or second?
Second.
Motion made by member Strand, seconded by member Gregor to adopt resolution 2016-30. It adds some parcels. I'll read the action. The resolution 2016-30 adds four properties to the January 17th, 2017 land auction. Hammer and Weacon Incorporated has made application to purchase lot A of parcel 01-006-442 at 1199 Hoggin Drive. And Susan Paulson and James or Chris Jensen have made application to purchase lots 6, 7, and 8 of block 76 located at 701, 703, and 705 North Fourth Street. So this is just adding these parcels to our auction. Any other discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Eric?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes. Okay, resolution 2016-30 passes unanimously. So those lots will be added to the auction. Now we, this item 16-339, reschedule public hearing for dangerous buildings at 510 Lumber Street Island Trailer Court Space 4W. I'd entertain a motion to reschedule that date. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by member Gregor, seconded by member Strand, uh, Strand, I believe, that's the order it was in, to reschedule this public hearing. And this was, this rescheduled because the applications didn't get sent out or notifications or something on top of?
That's correct. I will take responsibility that the notification did not get out in a timely manner.
So do we have time to get the notifications out and address this by the meeting on the 19th of December?
No. So I am requesting that it be rescheduled for January 3rd, please.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Well, if we can't have it before that, I guess, I don't know if there's any problem with it or not. Any other discussion? Okay, if we have, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, reschedule the public hearing for January 3rd.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, next item on the agenda is 16-342, authorization to enter into design contract with PND Engineers Incorporated for design and permitting services for the City Creek Dam rehabilitation. I'd entertain a motion to authorize that.
I so move.
Second.
Second.
A motion made by member Logodakis, seconded by member Lynn to authorize the Borough to go into a contract with PND Engineers for the design work on City Creek Dam rehabilitation. Any questions of Chris, I guess? He's in the audience. He wrote the request. Chris Cola. Eric?
Go ahead. Well, no questions, but just kind of a kudos for having been able to talk down the, the cost, you know, over $80,000.
Yeah, I recognize the rhetoric. Bob?
Yeah, I agree with that, but I had a question for Chris though. What was the, when we get to the actual contract administration phase of that, what's your, the length of time and what do you think that's going to cost us to?
Well, we, we don't know that at this point because the, the job is still evolving. I don't expect it's going to be that significant just because we're, you know, we're trying to break this up into smaller contracts. The, you know, the structural portion and the electrical stuff, we're, you know, we probably won't need an inspector for those projects. The only thing we, we'll probably bring an inspector in for is the, you know, the concrete work, just reconstructing that spillway. And I really can't see that lasting more than a few weeks of construction time. So, yeah, I mean, at this point, I, I would be surprised if we had 30, $40,000 into inspection. But again, we're, we're at the very early stages of designing this thing, so don't hold me to that number.
Thanks, Chris. Any other questions of Chris? Was he here?
Yeah, please. Read the proposal and your recommendation. Everything seems pretty clear, but I guess I'd ask for the sake of asking if there's any concerns you've got about the project that we should know about.
At this point, no. I think we're, you know, we've got a pretty good idea of what needs to be done and, you know, there could always be surprises, but we've had the engineer out to look at it and there don't seem to be underlying issues that we know about yet that could, you know, add a lot of cost to the job. It's, so far, it seems pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Chris. Just for the listening public, this is amount not to exceed $56,090 for this engineering work. Any other discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Jay?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimous to authorize the Borough to go into a design contract with PND. Next item on the agenda is communications. Does anybody have any communications they'd like to report? Debbie, were you going to mention in one letter, did you pass that out to the assembly?
I haven't yet, but I will be sending it to the assembly.
Okay.
Via email.
Thank you. It's about, has something to do with the college funding of Southeast Alaska campus versus Fairbanks?
Yes.
Was going to be the head campus. It was going to affect funding and classes and so we were looking for some support. I believe that came from Southeast Conference, Shelley, right?
It did.
Yeah.
So I'll send it out to you after the meeting. So everybody check your emails.
Okay, thanks. Any other communications? It came too late. We wouldn't have been able to take action on this meeting anyway, so. Discussion items, there's none listed. Anybody have any items they'd like to discuss? Cindy?
Just one. And, and I hesitate to bring it up because I don't want to blindside Shandra, but I've heard some talk about the possibility of a Parks and Rec advisory group, not necessarily a full board, because I think we've got more than enough boards, but we've got a new staff on, on board that probably would welcome some direction from the community. And so I'd like to talk maybe about putting together an ad hoc group that would have a, a term date so that it would just provide a little bit of direction about where the community saw, thought they wanted some Parks and Rec functions to go in the future and also make some, have some conversation about what we can afford in the future and what we can't because we know that will be part of the, part of the discussion.
So is this a group of people that have expressed interest in forming a committee?
No, I just heard some rumbling in the background that that might be something desired and so I wanted to start that conversation.
How does Shandra feel about this? Do you want to?
And my apologies, we're not talking to you first.
Committees and when we've restructured, this one was voted to not have one, but there were some people that wanted to have a Parks and Rec board. We've had them forever. So anyways, Shandra from Park.
As I'm getting used to being in my role and getting to know everybody in town, I do appreciate feedback. I've heard lots of great things about some of the advisory boards that I had, that other people, that my coworkers have. So whether, I don't know, I was more just interested in getting thoughts and opinions from people. The actual sitting down with Steve and talking about a board, I don't, I'm not.
Well, and to be clear, I'm not talking about a regular board that is appointed forever and ever. I would be, maybe just a focus group would be a better way to term it.
So that could be something that could probably be formed without any official action of the assembly. Really couldn't? Steve, do you have an opinion?
You're correct, Mayor. So if Chandra wants to do a focus group or pull people together to have that conversation, she's more than welcome to do that.
There you go.
I mean, any formal advisory board has to go through the assembly though, so you guys have, would have to reestablish it and appoint it and go through that route.
Just a question for you. Is, are you thinking just Petersburg or are you thinking the Borough as a whole?
That's a good question. I would say the Borough as a whole.
I was interested in getting everyone.
So there's some food for thought.
Well, since you're on the spot already, I might as well continue. You have a preference of what you'd like from us? Would you rather operate on your own with more of a focus group type approach or would you like us to take action and appoint an advisory committee for you? If you had your others, how would you want that to look?
Right now, I would like just a focus group. Maybe in the future, though, I might request an advisory board. There's, I'm looking at setting up, you know, years out, focuses on what you guys would like and what the, what the Borough would like as a whole. So the more feedback I can get right now, the better.
Cool. Thank you.
Thanks, Shandra. Any other questions? So maybe it's something that'll just form
Well, and that gives her the flexibility of, of starting it herself too, if she'd like to.
Okay, any other discussion items? If not, recognitions? Anybody have any recognitions? We already recognized Matt for putting up all the lights all over town, didn't we? Brighter and public, or power and light for keeping the tree from falling over and?
I have one. And that is, my understanding is, and I'm going to put Joe on the spot, who's here helping record for KFSK. He did a lovely picture of the memorial that happened for Marie East Brecht in Molly Parks, that, a painting. And I understand that has been purchased anonymously and will be donated to the library for the community to enjoy. So I wanted to acknowledge that person's thoughtful effort. And beautiful painting, Joe, by the way.
Okay, any other recognitions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Kurt, you're there. All right, all of the favor say aye.
Aye.